Good morning. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Bishop George Whitlock III, the Senior Pastor of the Bond Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Counselor JT Moore. If you're willing and able, please stand.
It's down. There we go. Good morning, everybody. If you'll join me in prayer this morning, Father, we thank you for your goodness. Thank you for your mercy. Lord, we thank you for our city councillors. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for all that sit in the city seat of government. May you give grace, may you give mercy, may you give wisdom, and may you give discernment. May you give the ability to distinguish between the decisions that are right and the decisions that are just, the decisions that move progressively forward our city and prosper your people. May you bless each and every one of us with peace. We pray for the presence of God to cover us as we move throughout the corridors of our cities. We thank you for the walls of protection and the angels that go with us. May you continue to gather us on one accord as we build a vibrant city, as we build a great place for children, family, and friends. We love you and we honor you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
All right, Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning. Council, the minutes are not ready for the May 6th through, May 6th, 2025 through October 14th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
I'll try it again. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. It's good to see all of you all this morning. A lengthy mayor's report, so please bear with us this morning. The first thing I want to do is unfortunately acknowledge on the loss of one of our team members of Birmingham Fire and Rescue Services, a true friend and public servant, Terry Allen Sergeant Jr. He died Sunday at the age of 47. He was very young. I spoke with his mother yesterday, known as Ted by his family and friends. He was assigned to Station Two at UAB. He served as a firefighter EMT. Ted Sargent was also a devoted father and son. I spoke with Chief Corey Moon yesterday as well, in person and by phone, who described him as not only a great man, but a good public servant. Our condolences are with his family in France and the entire Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service, those at the fire station he worked with, those who came in in his class, as well as his friends beyond City Hall and the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Team. On a personal note, in 2021, knocking on doors in North Avondale, I knocked on his mother's door, not knowing that that was his mother at the time. He actually answered the door. I ended up not only having a conversation with him, but his mom and his aunt who live around the corner and other family members in North Avondale, where my mother grew up and his family knew my family. So I just want to say to his mother, Ms. Linda, publicly, we are so sorry for the loss of your son and our prayers are with you. This time, I want to also give an acknowledgement to the 84th Magic City Classic. It is officially Classic Week. We're going to ask everyone to pace yourself, stay hydrated, take a nap if you can, maybe. But the nation's number one HBCU classic returns to our city, one of Birmingham's most celebrated traditions. The 84th Magic City Classic is where Alabama A&amp;M University and Alabama State University face off in the legendary Gridiron Showdown. This annual game is more than football. It's a cultural celebration of HBCU pride, paternity, as well as community. You can get details about all the events taking place this week, and there are literally too many to name. But the parade and the big game are on Saturday, and you can get more information at birminghamal.gov/classic. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/classic. A most recent tradition has been the Awakened event. That's A-W-A-K-E-N, Awakened. This year, the City of Birmingham presents Awakened, which we celebrate local changemakers who use creativity, advocacy, and service to advance social justice and community programs. This year, we're honored to acknowledge Joe Mentor, who is a world-renowned sculptor, community historian and founder of African Village in America, whose visionary art chronicles the Black experience and the struggle for freedom, justice, and unity. This year's program theme is Art as Resistance. Again, that's Art as Resistance: Awakening Justice Through Creativity. The event, which is orchestrated by the Division of Social Justice and Racial Equity, will take place this Friday, October 24th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Birmingham Museum of Art. The program will also feature a musical performance, spoken word, and a panel discussion. This event is free, but you must register, and the registration is at EventBrite, and please type Awaken 2025. Again, when you go to EventBrite, please type Awaken 2025. Next week, as we close out October, I want to remind the council, the City of Birmingham will host Woodfin's Roundup Harvest Festival. We want to invite all of our families to saddle up for some fall fun at the 2025 Harvest Festival themed Roundup Harvest, take place next Wednesday, October 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. The celebration will take place on short 20th and front of City Hall. This event is also free. It is inspired by the popular Toy Story movie. The event will feature carnival rides and playables, food trucks, plenty of safe family fun, and probably some candy. Children are encouraged to come dress in their favorite costumes as well and join in the festivities. Again, this event is free to our community and families, and it's especially designed for parents who have children between the ages of two and 12, and promises and even full of laughter, treats, and togetherness in the heart of our downtown. At this time, I would like to ask Rashida Workman, who is the CEO of the YWCA of Central Alabama, as well as her team, Rebecca McWilliams, the Executive Director of One Place Family Justice Center, and her guests to come up as well, as we acknowledge Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I also would like to ask the President of the Birmingham City Council, Dr. Darrell O'Quinn, to join me at the podium. As he comes down and as they come up, we have to acknowledge that domestic violence is a serious public health and safety issue that affects individuals and families in every neighborhood of Birmingham and throughout the state of Alabama. You see, as a prosecutor for several years in the domestic violence courtroom, I can tell you that domestic violence supersedes race, it supersedes age and gender and socioeconomic status, or any background you have. And so I think it's important with amazing champions against domestic violence with the two organizations and women and leaders you see here, who literally stand in a gap to support victims of domestic violence, who are advocates and who are on the front line of justice. We want to take the time to recognize the victims, their loved ones, and the individuals who work every day. These individuals work literally every day to support them. And so now I'll just pause to read a proclamation in part, and then I'll pass it to Dr. O'Quinn before these two leaders on behalf of their organizations speak. In the states where as October is recognized as nationwide as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, provided an important opportunity to educate the public, raise awareness under survivors, and remember those who have lost their lives to domestic violence. And whereas during this month and throughout the year, all residents are encouraged to learn more about the signs of abuse, support those affected by domestic violence, and promote safe and healthy relationships within our community. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Birmingham, and urge all citizens to join in the observance by supporting local efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence, and by committing to stand together for a future free from violence. At this time, I'd like to ask your colleague, again, to speak and say something in addition to what I've said before. The two strong advocates speak on behalf of their organizations.
Good morning, council. On behalf of the City Council, I want to thank One Place Family Justice Center and YWCA in particular, in addition to all of the other organizations that work in the domestic violence space every day in our city of Birmingham. Over the past few years, I've become aware of a statistic that sticks with me, and that is, in Birmingham and elsewhere, many, if not most, of our homicides are actually connected to domestic violence. And that's, you know, just reiterates why this is such an important issue to focus on, and I'm incredibly thankful for the organizations that work with the victims and to provide them shelter and comfort and get them removed from that situation. So with the utmost sincerity, thank you for all that you do.
Mayor Woodfin and members of the City Council, today, my colleagues and I rise on behalf of the 80 employees of YWCA Central Alabama to thank you for this meaningful proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. For 122 years, the YWCA has been a beacon of hope, safety, and support for individuals and families across Central Alabama. What began as a small effort to uplift women and children has grown into a mission-driven organization rooted in service, justice, and compassion. Today, we stand proudly as the state-certified provider of domestic violence for Jefferson, St. Clair, and Blount Counties, having served hundreds of women through emergency shelter, crisis intervention, legal advocacy, and long-term support for survivors. But we do not do this work alone. We are grateful to the City of Birmingham, its leadership, and its people for your continued support and leadership. Together, we are not only supporting survivors in moments of crisis, but also building pathways to independence. This month, we honor the survivors who chose courage over silence. We remember those we have lost to violence, and we recommit ourselves to working together across agencies, across sectors, across this city, to build a future where every person feels safe in their own homes. On behalf of the YWCA Central Alabama, thank you again to the City of Birmingham for standing with us, not just in proclamation, but in partnership and purpose. Together, we will continue to meet people where they are and move them to where they dream to be, safe, stable, and free. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca McWilliams, and I am the Executive Director of One Place Metro Alabama Family Justice Center. On behalf of our Board of Directors, staff, and the survivors we serve every day, I want to extend our gratitude to Mayor Woodfin and the Birmingham City Council for your efforts and support in bringing awareness to and recognizing the importance of addressing domestic violence in our community. Domestic violence is a public health and a public safety crisis in Birmingham. As Counselor O'Quinn alluded to, we know that over 70% of known domestic violence, or known homicide offenders in Jefferson County, who have killed anybody, have a history of domestic violence. Domestic violence is not just something that takes place in the home behind closed doors, rather, it spills out into our neighborhoods through violence, addiction, homelessness, joblessness, physical and mental health, and through our children. Domestic violence perpetuates the generational cycle of violence, poverty, and trauma that affects so many communities. So I ask us all today, what are we doing as a community to create systems that help survivors to escape and supports them as they rebuild their lives safely? What are we doing to hold offenders accountable? And what are we doing to promote healing for all? It is not on an individual victim to solve their domestic violence crisis. It is the responsibility of all of us, and their life's the mission of One Place, to lead a coordinated community response to domestic and sexual violence that protects survivors, promotes healing, and holds offenders accountable. Our vision, a community united against domestic and sexual violence, one that ensures safety and justice for survivors, and works together to break the cycle of generational violence. Thank you for joining with us today in support of the belief that everyone has the right to live a life that is safe and free of violence. We look forward to continuing our work together.
Counselor Smithman?
I really want to thank you for the work that you do. Even though I wasn't a prosecutor, I worked in the domestic violence clinic at the University of Alabama School of Law, and that was a very interesting experience because, as you guys experienced, that when you work with a client for so many months, and you're thinking like, oh, we're almost there for a PFA, and then they ghost you. And then I remember one client in particular, I hadn't heard from her for weeks. I told my professor, I was like, I haven't heard from her, worried. I called her, she was back with her husband. And, but my biggest success story was going to court as a baby law student, because I had my 3O card, and getting a PFA for a girl who was actually 17, 18 years old. And I don't think a lot of people realize that, that also is high school, that domestic violence happens. And, you know, I know we've been working really, really hard, but, you know, people have realized it starts as early as 14, 15 years old. And so just having that little bit of experience, and I still do that now, it really is a thankless job, and you guys save so many lives. And so if there's anything I can do to support you all, I will. Thank you, Counselor Quinn. I think you gave a good bit of your arpa funding towards that. And I just look forward to continuing the work because, you know, during the pandemic, we saw that domestic violence increased, and I don't think it ever came back down. So continue, you did not, continue the good work, continue, you know, spreading the love, and just, just continue and make sure that we continue to make the world a safer place for everybody. Thank you.
So, Mr. President and Council, we have some pretty amazing women in the, in the audience today. And at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Pauline Park, President of the Omicron Omega Chapter Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, as well as all the ladies of this amazing chapter, to join me at the podium. I don't know why they're trying to be shy. They weren't shy this morning. Oh, of course, your colleague, and I apologize. She beat me to it. Wardine Alexander, thank you so much for joining as well. Judge Smithman, I see, I see you. And I also want to acknowledge the Regional President, who was in the audience today. Tracy Moran Adams, everyone. And so before you this morning, this is a special occasion. The Omicron Omega Chapter of AKA was chartered 101 years ago, and although they did it really, really big last year. Okay, really, really big. They're just getting started, 101 years in, right here in Birmingham, Alabama. Throughout its years, Omicron Omega has created a strong footprint, a very strong footprint across the Birmingham area and beyond. And so in honor of their milestone, I would like to read a proclamation only in part. In the states where as it is with great honor that we pause and celebrate the commitment to service, the bond of immense sisterhood, and the centennial celebration of the Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. It is where as it was on October 24th, 1924, that the Omicron Omega Chapter received its charter in the City of Birmingham, becoming the 15th Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and the first graduate chapter to be chartered in the southeastern region. And where since its inception, Omicron Omega Chapter has consistently strived to do things that are worthwhile. The chapter has worked so hard in greater Birmingham metropolitan area for more than 100 years. Currently, the chapter's membership includes hundreds of professional women who are dedicated public servants and graduates of numerous accredited colleges and universities throughout the United States. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, the Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with Wardine Alexander, Pro Tem of the Birmingham City Council, along with the entire Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, as AKA Day here at City Hall, and the keys are yours. I spoke to Ms. Pauline earlier. She has decided to wear two hats. Beyond this speaking presentation, I will no longer be serving as mayor today. I resume my duties at 12:01 a.m. And so with that, I present Madam President.
Thank you so much. And thank you for that proclamation. Thanks so much. We're grateful to receive it. Good morning to the, to the Honorable Mayor Randall Woodfin, Council President, Dr. O'Quinn, President Pro Tem, Wardine Alexander, and esteemed members of the Birmingham City Council. And so with our protocol, I am going to also address my Regional Director, Tracy Moran Adams, as she stands with us as I read information to you. On behalf of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Omicron Omega Chapter, I bring you heartfelt greetings. We stand before you, united in our mission to serve all mankind. With over 450 members, we make an impact in the greater Birmingham area. The chapter has partnerships with agencies like NWACP, March for Babies, Child Care Resources, and the YWCA, who are here today, the Sicko Cell Foundation, Birmingham City Schools, where we implement two of our international programs, one at Wickerson Elementary Youth Leadership Institute, and at Princeton Alternative Elementary, where we implement the international program CHIP. And CHIP provides 65 students experiencing food insecurities with healthy, non-perishable meals and snacks each week. Last week, last year, I'm sorry, I had the honor of standing here to announce the celebration of Omicron Omega Chapter's 100th Anniversary. 100 years of sisterhood, scholarships, and service, right here in Birmingham. It was a beautiful milestone, but our real joy comes from continuing the work. We promise to give back, to assist, and to support the students of Birmingham City Schools, and we did just that. Through our Centennial Capital Campaign 1924, led by Ms. Donna Turner and Ms. Veronica Merritt, our membership, our membership raised $100,000, and the chapter awarded $75,000 in scholarships to 25 Birmingham City Schools students. And we also established a $25,000 endowment. We are absolutely proud of the positive impact we continue to make, and we are deeply grateful to Mayor Woodfin and to this council for your ongoing support of our efforts to serve the greater Birmingham community through programs, activities, and scholarships that uplift others. And so again, I would like to recognize our great Wardine, the President Pro Tem, and I cannot leave this area with not acknowledging the District Eight Carroll Clark, where our Pearl Center resides in your district. And so having that center there, we are able to execute a lot of programs and activities for the community. So thank you for all that you do, and thank the council for standing with us and pushing us to higher ground. We really enjoy serving and making an impact in Birmingham, Alabama. Thank you. Y'all gonna keep me, or?
Seeing this is my last duty, temporarily until 12:01 a.m. I understand that the, there will be Omicron Omega Punch throughout City Hall. And I also understand we're actually temporarily removing this flag you see out here and replacing it with an AKA flag as well.
I object. I'm sorry. I object now.
Madam President, is there anything else? Okay, well, let's see. All you have to do is just back up a little, and we're gonna take a picture right here where everyone is. where everyone is. So, Mr. President and Council, there's one more thing I need to do, is, I mean, is to acknowledge three people. Uh, I want to start with Counselor JT Moore. Um, in front of all your colleagues, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your service to the city. I want to thank you for your service, absolutely. I want to thank you to your service to the residents of District 4. Uh, you and I, um, became professional colleagues four years ago, and the issues, the concerns, and the problems, and the worries of the residents of District 4, I saw you put on your shoulders. But also saw you with their hopes, and their wishes, and their dreams, and the things they desire for the better. You also put those things and carry those on your shoulders, um, to serve those residents in all of those neighborhoods, which I think you had a significant amount of neighborhoods. But I saw how you showed up on their behalf, and I witnessed a lot of different things, whether it was a town hall meeting, a few neighborhood meetings, and other meetings, how you showed up for your residents, and on behalf of those residents. Um, on behalf of a grateful mayor, I want to publicly acknowledge you and thank you for your service to the residents of District 4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Saying to you, um, oh, by the way, um, even with the various changes of the committee structures, how you champion parks and recreations in the city with a different lens, a different head, and a sense of urgency, making sure we reopen our pools and other things, not just in your district, but citywide. I had a note, but I forgot to write it down, but I wanted to thank you for that as well. Counselor Clark, to you and your service, I want to express my appreciation to you as well, on behalf of the residents of District 8, um, publicly acknowledging your work as well. You've been in and around City Hall in various capacities, on the executive team, and then you've served now as in the legislative branch for the last four years, bringing a wealth of knowledge, um, to this day, as, um, as well as, um, a lot of ideas and suggestions, and so many other things you recommended to us as an administration. And I know before you came into your position, uh, I had to probably work with your neighborhood officers, more so than any other district across the entire city. And so those same issues, concerns, problems, in one hand, and those, their desires and wishes and hopes, in the other, I also saw you carrying, so I want to publicly acknowledge, um, your service to the residents of District 8 the last four years and say thank you. Absolutely. Okay, young lady, get down here right now. You, come on up. So, I'm gonna knock the serious part out of the way, uh, with this young lady who's coming down, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. Everybody knows Valerie Abbott. The City of Birmingham is, proudly recognizes your significant service to the City of Birmingham. Marking your retirement, we want to express our deep appreciation for you and who you are. With a tremendous amount of respect, um, I stand before you in front of the public to say you have been a steadfast champion of the City of Birmingham, strategic growth to ensure development, as well as sustainability for generations to come. Your tireless schedule, which is crazy by the way, of neighborhood meetings, community events reflects not only your unwavering commitment to listening and learning, but also responding to the needs and concerns of Birmingham residents, not just in District 3, but citywide. Ensuring that you approach every issue before the City Council with firsthand understanding and thoughtful representation, shout out to always reading everything.
And pointing out the typos.
Yes. Whereas is spelled W-H-E-R-E-A-S. Your leadership extends well beyond the council chamber. Serving on the boards of the Birmingham Planning Commission, Birmingham Tree Commission, Birmingham Historical Society, and the Metro, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and did I forget the Birmingham Tree Commission, Birmingham Tree Commission, Birmingham Tree Commission? As well as chairing the Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham. Your collaboration with fellow counselors and staff has led to meaningful revisions to city ordinances on noise, smoking, and fences, while your passion for urban greenery and environmental stewardship has spurred community gardens, including a national award-winning project in East Avondale, and renewed energy in Birmingham's recycling initiatives. And whereas Counselor Abbott's numerous volunteer honors from civic and environmental organizations further reflect her decades-long impact on the city's neighborhoods, including Crestwood South, East Avondale, Five Point South, Forest Park, South Avondale, Gleniris, Highland Park, and Redmont Park. Now therefore, I Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, do hereby commend and celebrate your colleague, our City Counselor, Counselor Valerie Abbott, for your extraordinary contributions, your visionary leadership, and your enduring legacy of civic engagement, sustainability, and community pride. Now that's the formal stuff, everybody, putting that aside. On a personal note, um, you all know I've been in and around public service in City Hall right out of college since 2003, so what's that clock at 22 years? And I was afforded an opportunity to stumble upon the third floor, right out of college, actually, and work for the council president at the time, Lee Lo, Lee Loeder. It was an interesting time, by the way. There were at least 16 people running for mayor. I think I'm standing next to one. I could be wrong, maybe that was a different time. Anyway, this young lady had a team member who worked for her, named Ms. Martha, who I saw more than I saw Ms. Abbott. But I got a chance, even though I didn't work for Counselor Abbott, and work in District 3, understand the dynamics and the issues of District 3, and how Counselor Valerie Abbott showed up, just by spending so much time with Ms. Martha. You know, if you're an intern on that floor, you end up spending more time with the staff than you do with the actual elected official, which is okay, because they're out in the community. That was the first thing of my interaction with Valerie Abbott, but it would not be my last over the 22 years I've had a chance to know her and work with her. What I can say is that you literally are probably one of the most consistent public servants I've ever met in my life. And the issues you are concerned and passionate about, you have led with them, you've stayed committed to them, and you championed them through literally, whether it was ordinance, a law, some changing something in Montgomery, or just using your voice here on, on this day, as in platform, to advocate again, well beyond for the residents of District 3, but the entire city. I've come to know you, uh, in ups and downs, uh, from some, your highest highs to some of your lowest lows with loss. And I've seen how you've shown up, and I've seen how you rebound, and I just want to publicly express my personal appreciation for you, well beyond being the position of mayor, well beyond being a professional colleague, but as a friend, I'm gonna miss you so much, and I want to thank you. She just said I wasn't supposed to make her cry. Sorry. That's the way it works. Anything you want to say?
Anytime somebody makes you cry, you should always make a speech. So, what I want to say is that I'm going to miss every single person here, and even some of the ones that aren't here, especially since they're gone. But this has been a labor of love, and sure, I'm gonna miss all of it. I'm gonna miss y'all, I'm gonna miss fighting with people, I'm gonna miss having discussions about short-term rentals, and how I don't ever want to see one again. So, and, and, and the issue of trees, which of course is on our agenda today, thanks to Dr. Lee and Julie Bernard, and Mr. Mayor. So, I'm just gonna stop now, because we've had a long morning, but I just want you to know that I love you. I love every single one of you, and you are the best counsel I've ever served with, ever, and I've had six of them. So, I won't tell you which one was bad. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, without objection, we're gonna suspend our rules. Uh, we have planned a presentation for you, Counselor Abbott, so I'm gonna ask Representative Datcher and Senator Smithman, along with your Chief of Staff, Darrell Lee, to join me at the lectern, please.
All right, I was waiting on that cue. You know, it's not often that you get a chance to honor of a friend, and, and I say that because many people don't know how far you, you and I go back. We go back some 30 years. I, I rounded off and said 30 years. We go back to the time when you were Neighborhood President, and, uh, as I said at your affair, the last one, we were there, I had this loss, I said, you ran a tight ship. You know, you did a good job in, in making sure all was taken care of, and the mayor has mentioned a lot of those things. And, but, the thing I remember the most, one of the things is that, as I said, the friendship. You know, I remember the late nights when you first started, when you were talking about running to be in the city council, and your husband and I would be at the house at 11:00, 12:00, and 1:00. We'd be out in the streets at 11:00, 12:00, and 1:00, putting signs out and everything else, you know, and so I just noticed you on the council, and you would just step forward and been the counterperson that, you know, sets the example, as I told you over there, you are the Dean of this council, you know, and that's, that's, that says a lot, you know, uh, so I, I, I wanted you to know that the members of our local senate delegation in particular want to let you know how we felt about you from that standpoint, but I want to let you know how I feel about you, and I, we gonna miss you. We gonna miss what you brought to this city from this perspective, we gonna miss it, you know, and I was saying that just keep on doing what you're doing, because, you know, we're going through some tough times, and, you know, it's gonna take wisdom like yours to be able to show some of the directions that we might need to go. So you don't stop, and that's what we want to say to you. But this resolution is, the most important thing about it is that it's a part of the Alabama archives and history, and as such, anybody in this world that can get on the internet, that can know you, they gonna do everything that's in this resolution about you. So, you know, your, your, your word and your works is gonna go worldwide now, and that's what's so important about this. But, uh, I, I wanted to, I'm gonna read just a part of it, because the mayor has, as I said, shared with each and every person in here, all those brilliant things that you've been doing and have done. This resolution is commending the honorable Valerie Anerton Abbott for her distinguished service on the occasion of her retirement by Senator Smithman, Coleman, Coleman Madison, Roberts, Shellnut, Woods, and Wagner. Whereas the Birmingham City Council and the citizens of Birmingham, Alabama, pause to recognize and commend Counselor Valerie Anerton Abbott for her extraordinary service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the people of District 3 and the entire city of Birmingham. Whereas she has been recognized with numerous honors, including Birmingham's Unsong Hero Award in 1993, and has left an indelible mark on the civic, environmental, and cultural fabric of the city she has so faithfully served, now therefore be resolved by the sending of the Legislature of Alabama, that we hereby commend Counselor Valerie Anerton Abbott for her decades of exemplary public service, and extend heartfelt congratulations on her well-earned retirement, and is signed by the Secretary of the Senate and Lieutenant Governor Will Ainsworth. And also, we wanted to put store on you the state flag of Alabama from the Alabama Senate, and it's for outstanding service, Valerie Anerton Abbott, Birmingham City Council, District 3. And at this time, I would like my colleague to come forward. Representative, you come right on up, and I will give the mic to you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Counsel. Good morning, everyone. In the most eloquent way possible, let me just say ditto, uh, because everything that he said is, is a part of my experience with Ms. Abbott. I will say this, when Sheila Tyson, former counselor, blessed me with the opportunity to come serve here, I was really worried about some of the dynamics, and one of the strangest, most bizarre, most productive relationships up here became Sheila Tyson and Valerie Abbott, because it was people over politics. And the one other thing is, we always said, when I joined the mayor's staff, and he blessed me with that opportunity, uh, if it's Abbott's, uh, committee, make sure we have our stuff together before we do our presentations, because we knew the kinds of questions, uh, that would be coming, because we knew how much you prepared and how much you poured into this work, so. On behalf of the 17 members of the House delegation of the Jefferson County, um, uh, House delegation, we want to provide you with this resolution as well, and we hope to get a great picture with both of them, uh, and Senator Smithman. Thank you.
Good morning, Counsel. We are here today to celebrate 24 years of remarkable, longstanding service on the City Council. Let's give a round of applause to Counsel Abbott. We looked it up and found out that this is the longest contiguous service of any counselor in Birmingham city history. That is quite an accomplishment. Counsel, your approach to service reminds me of what it was like being in sixth grade in youth baseball. My father had a busy schedule, he would drop me off, go run some errands, and then pick me up after the game, often missing the game. That is until the last game of the season. And as luck would have it, I hit my game-winning run. And I realized that having him there in that moment meant the world to me, because showing up matters. For 24 years, Counselor Abbott has shown up at council meetings, at neighborhood association gatherings, in her district and beyond, she's been there, present, engaged, consistent. For 24 seasons, you've stepped up to the plate, you've taken curveballs, you fielded hard hits, and you kept showing up inning after inning. We know leadership isn't always about the scoreboard, it's about being there for every play and every meeting, and for 24 years, you've done exactly that, missing only two council meetings in 24 years. So, today, we present you with this Birmingham Barron's jersey, a symbol of how you've worn Birmingham's name with pride and dedication and grace, and if you'll notice, it says Abbott with the number 24. That is one of one. Thank you, Counselor, for showing up for your district, for your council, and for this city. Thank you.
To Mayor Woodfin, President O'Quinn, Pro Tem Alexander, and to this council. I always tell people dead noses smell no roses. So, to start off, I want to honor my boss, my mentor, my leader, my friend with her flowers while she yet live. Thank you. Counselor Abbott has been a great voice to District Three, and I just want to share a few words. Today, we gather not to just mark an ending, but to celebrate a remarkable journey. For twelve years, we've had the honor of calling you boss, a woman of integrity, principle, and hard work. But for me, and for so many of us here, she's been more than that. She's been a friend, a friendship that spanned it over more than thirty-five years, built on mutual respect, honesty, and greatness. You've not led from a place of power, but from a place of purpose. You've guided us with wisdom, with steadfastness, and with fairness. I've entitled you, in your previous campaign, the voice of reasoning. When emotions ran high, the calm in the storm and the anchor that kept us grounded when the wind changed and was blown. You're the person that Kipling reminds me of, of one who can walk with king and noble man, but never lose the common touch with mankind. You're a woman of dignity, discipline, but also of deep compassion and humility. You've shown us what it means to serve with character and to lead with heart. Counselor Abbott, and yes, there's a book being written about your journey from me and my family. But as we all know, no great story is complete without a final chapter. And that chapter, your final grand finale today, is being written at your last council meeting. We honor you, I honor you, we honor you as a mentor, we celebrate you as a trailblazer, and we cherish you as a friend. Thank you, Counselor Valerie Abbott, for being our example, our encourager, our voice of reason, and my work wife. My wife says she's my work wife, because we talk about twenty-five to thirty times a day. And so, in her retirement, there was a T-shirt made. She and I, we've had so many conversations. I wanted to get her to take her hair down today, but we never got that far because of things that were a busy week, a busy week. So, we couldn't work that out, but one day, you might see a picture with her bones down. So, Counselor Abbott, on behalf of District Three and all of its constituents, we love you. And Mr. President, without true permission, I have a very short video.
Sure.
Sure. And I'm sorry for the label of time, but if you think about twenty-four years, fifty-two weeks out of a year, sitting in here four to six hours, and now we've had some for eight hours, and continue to the next day, thank you all for your indulgence in celebrating my boss, Counselor Valerie Abbott. I'd like to pick you up that video now. Raise your right hand. I.
I, Valerie Abbott.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
or affirm.
or affirm.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution.
the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
and of the state of Alabama.
and of the state of Alabama.
that I will, in all respect.
that I will, in all respects.
observe the provision of the ordinance.
observe the provision of the ordinance.
of the city of Birmingham.
of the city of Birmingham.
and I will.
and I will.
faithfully.
faithfully.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of council member.
of council member.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
thank you.
I'm going to miss the fact that I have dedicated my life to this job. And after twenty, it'll be twenty-three years, eleven months, and one day that I will have spent in this office. And I actually was sworn into office on my wedding anniversary, so I can always remember the date. So, yeah, I'm going to miss lots of things about it, you know, the camaraderie. This is the best counsel I've ever served with. So, I was glad that I stuck it out for one more term. And so, this group means something special to me. And it'll be hard to walk away, especially feeling like things are unfinished, but I'm going to be watching, because I've got projects that are supposed to have already started, but they haven't yet. And so, I told Josh, he could have full credit for getting them done, as long as he made sure they got done.
Thank you so very much. And in closing, thank you, Counselor Abbott, for entrusting me to work with you, to speak on your behalf, to walk behind the scenes, but yet, it was all about you and the district. To Mayor Woodfin, thank you. You know what I'm talking about. Thank you so much. And to this council, thank you all for all that you have done to make District Three and the city of Birmingham to be the best that it could be. Thank you, and God bless you.
I'm going to prolong this one little bit more to say that Darrell Lee, Dr. Darrell Auburn Lee, as my phone reminds me, he and Martha Espy were the two greatest assistants anybody could ever have, because they weren't assistants, really. They were friends and colleagues and supporters. Darrell always had my back. Martha wasn't big enough to have my back, but Darrell, he could do it. And they're just, no one works harder twenty-four-seven. And he probably calls you all on Sundays and Saturdays and nights, holidays. So, I just want to say that about Dr. Lee, because he is very special also. And we're still going to talk, but probably not twenty-five times a day. Thank you.
Good morning, Counselor.
How are you?
I'm fine. I just couldn't let the time pass without scurrying from court to come over here and see you. We started together. I know what your hair look like when it's down, because Rod told me, your husband told me. We didn't even have gray hair back then, Valerie, but we came to a very turbulent time, you and I, and we made it work. The council supported our decisions, and you made a difference. So, life come at you fast. Just don't go home and sit down. Please don't. You see, there's much more for you to do, much more work, because you do it so well. God bless you, and may he continue to bless the works of your hands and your heart.
All right, I think I'm the last speaker. So, a lot has been said, and I won't repeat that, but, you know, one of the things that comes to mind for me is that when I came to Birmingham twenty-five years ago, you were my counselor. And without a doubt, and I think most of us will acknowledge this, you've been the prototype. You certainly were my prototype for doing it right. And so, always showing up for your folks, I've tried to follow in your footsteps, and you were the example. So, thank you very much for your service to the citizens of Birmingham. You've been a tremendous representative for District Three, but you have also represented the entire city, showed up in places where, you know, folks didn't expect you, all over the city, every district. So, again, thank you for your service, and of course, I want to offer a resolution. So, let me read that. I think the mayor copied off of our notes, because they're very similar. Okay, here it goes. Whereas it is the custom of this legislative body to recognize and honor those distinguished citizens of this great city who have devoted themselves to faithfully serving the best interest of their community and the needs of its residents. In full accord with its longstanding tradition, the council of the city of Birmingham is justly proud to congratulate Counselor Valerie A. Abbott on the occasion of her retirement after twenty-four years of dedicated service with the city of Birmingham, representing the third district. Whereas first elected to the Birmingham City Council in two thousand and one, Counselor Abbott has successfully brought to fruition many of the needs and desires of the constituents of District Three. Through her luminous leadership, she has assisted with the development of various multimillion-dollar projects in her district and across the city of Birmingham. A devoted community leader with deep roots in the business sector, she has impacted change that has generated positive results for various neighborhoods in District Three. And whereas during her tenure as a member of the Birmingham City Council, Counselor Abbott served with loyalty, honor, and distinction in several positions, which include council president, chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee. She has also served as a member of various council committees during the, including the most recently named Community Development Committee. Whereas Counselor Abbott serves on the boards of the Birmingham Planning Commission, the Birmingham Tree Commission, the Birmingham Historical Society, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and has served as chairman of the board of the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham. She has partnered with her fellow counselors and city staff to revise ordinances regulating noise, smoking, and fences. She possesses a deep-seated passion for gardening and nature, and her pursuit of neighborhood health and revitalization has led to two community gardens, including a national award-winning project in East Avondale. Under her painstaking appeals, Birmingham's recycling program has undergone a rebirth. And whereas Counselor Abbott obtained a bachelor's degree from the School of Architecture and Fine Arts at Auburn University, and a master's degree in public and private management from Birmingham Southern College, she was a dedicated employee of AT&amp;T Services, Inc. for forty-four years and is the recipient of several volunteer awards from organizations, including the Civitan Club and the Birmingham Tree Commission. In nineteen ninety-three, she was named Birmingham's Unsung Hero. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, extends its highest commendation to Counselor Valerie A. Abbott in appreciation of her conscientious and valuable service to this council. May her sincere concern, admirable servant leadership, and benevolent deeds on behalf of countless citizens stand as an example for others who would aspire to serve their community. Adopted this twenty-first day of October two thousand and twenty-five at the recommendation of Council President Darrell B. O'Quinn and all members of Birmingham City Council, so I move for unanimous consent.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And now the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye. All opposed, say nay.
All right, that motion passes.
This is brief, but Senator Smithman, Judge Smithman, Representative Kelvin Datcher, along with Josh Vassa, please come forward. We'll take this picture right here with Madam Retiree, Dean of the Council.
All right, at this time, we have two more presentations. Counselor Carol Clark of District Eight would like to make a presentation as they celebrate the storied career in landscape architecture and service in Birmingham.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Let me get myself together here. I'd like to ask Jane Reed Ross and her fan club to just sort of flank me at the podium. As I end my leadership journey with the city that I love this week, we get to honor one of the first design professionals I ever met. Thirty years ago, as a young, I was young once, consultant to Mayor Arrington's office, I had the eye-opening privilege of managing a set of projects the city needed to complete for the ninety-six Olympics. The city had started years before I arrived and was finishing up some bold beautification projects like the Archadelphia, landscaping the Archadelphia interchange, widening Princeton Parkway, and radically transforming Airport Highway. Thanks to the city and Jane Reed Ross, today, when we drive to and from the airport and experience the calming lush greenway adorned with and experience the calming lush greenway adorned with the whimsical sculpted paper airplanes, it's hard to remember the dull fence line behind the long string of power poles and power lines that separated motorists from slightly junky car deal, well, car rental agencies. That used to be the experience when you drove, made that same drive. And witnessing the transformation of that one street as a consultant to the city really stunned me and impressed me what, you know, what the public realm could really be made to look like. So if you'll indulge me, we're going to start with a little video and then I'll present the resolution and we'll hear from a couple of the speakers. Not everybody in the fan club. But if Kim, if you could start that video.
How do you connect the dots? I've always, I've always referred to planning, big picture planning, especially of trails and sidewalks and park systems as connecting the dots. You just have to look and see what you have. What are your assets? What do you consider assets? You know, schools, business districts, neighborhoods, you know? What are your assets and who needs to be connected? You know, in our parks and trails, you meet everybody. Community is formed like no other place that we experience. Are you exposed to that many different people? And have an opportunity to engage, meet them, and form relationships that last a lifetime. Those spaces are driving and attracting young people to live and work in downtown Birmingham. And we've seen that happen over the past thirty years. It's been a great ride watching the transformation. And to see those early conversations about Railroad Park. And there were a lot of people saying, well, you know, we don't have a river. You know, other cities have a river, we don't have a river. And I can remember Marjorie White with the Historical Society said, "We don't have a river, but we've got a railroad." And we can, we can green up the railroad reservation along First Avenue South and create our own green river. It's so important to invest in the infrastructure and providing quality spaces for people to interact. It's key to everything, to happiness, to a healthy city, to healthy, healthy vibrant people. And it's connected to our children. You know, something that I learned back when I did that sidewalk at Hayes Middle School and all the trails since then and all the public spaces, the zoo, the parks, and, and the projects that I've worked with and the projects that others have done that are so incredible. All that investment is so important in promoting the self-esteem of our children. It is directly, directly connected to them. They see it, they feel empowered to grow up and do well. And that's why that investment is so important, that we keep doing that. And it's good for adults too. And I look at them, all those spaces as old friends. You know, when I drive by or when I'm walking through, when I'm visiting, it's like I'm, I'm with an old friend. And I've seen it from the concept all the way through development and, and then people enjoying it. And it is fun and when you have a great team together, working, you know, collaborating on spaces and interacting and talking and listening to the people, the people will tell you what they need. I'm moving away, but I'm not leaving Birmingham. Right now, we're working on a master plan for Parks and Rec system. So I'll be working on that for the next couple of years. And we're very excited about that. Over the many years of working, people are always saying, when are they going to do this? Or that? And, and I always say, who, who's the they? We are the they. If you want a sidewalk, if you want a park, if you want your park restored or renovated, or you want a streetscape attended to, or whatever it is, you're the they. Gang consists of bringing people together, you know, we can all work together. Just about every project we've worked on, there was a champion that planted a seed. And then it grew. And that's how it works. Don't wait on the they, be the they.
Well, thank you all for indulging us. I know it's a long day of presentations, but some things just have to be said. And honoring and congratulating Jane Reed Ross, R.L.A.F.A.S.L.A. for a lifetime of service, vision, and beauty shared with the city of Birmingham and beyond. I'm going to read a resolution. Whereas the Birmingham City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Birmingham, Alabama, wishes to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary career and lasting legacy of Jane Reed Ross, a landscape architect whose artistry and civic spirit have shaped our city's public spaces for more than four decades. And whereas Jane Reed Ross has devoted her professional life to transforming the landscapes of Birmingham, turning asphalt and right-of-ways into welcoming greenways, gardens, plazas, and gathering spaces that embody our city's resilience and love of beauty. And whereas from the Railroad Park Team, Airport Highway, Birmingham Museum of Art Sculpture Garden, and Jones Valley Teaching Farm, to the Children's Zoo and Entrance Plaza at the Birmingham Zoo, Second Avenue Streetscape Rotary Trail, and Pepper Place, her visionary work has woven design excellence into the daily life of our city, touching the lives of countless residents and visitors who may never know her name, but have been moved by her work. And whereas through her leadership in the American Society of Landscape Architects, the Friends of Rotary Trail, Friends of Shades Creek, and numerous civic boards, Jane has uplifted Birmingham's voice in environmental stewardship and urban livability, promoting sustainability and access for all. And whereas her professional achievements have been honored with multiple ASLA Design Awards, the Red Rock Trail Master Plan Honor Award, GMC's George Goodwin Building Communities Award, the Jefferson County Health Department's twenty-twenty-three Health Champion Award, and the Sanford Medallion Award, culminating in her recognition as an esteemed Fellow of the American Society of Landscape Architects, a crowning accomplishment of her national impact. And whereas beyond the accolades, Jane's legacy is embedded in green corridors, shaded sidewalks, and shared spaces that have changed how Birmingham sees itself as a connected, as a city connected by beauty, guided by thoughtful design, and inspired by a woman who believes that placemaking is people-making. And as Jane Reed Ross prepares to embark on her next chapter in Denver, Colorado, near her beloved family, the city of Birmingham sends forth with gratitude, pride, and the assurance that her imprint will remain in every flowering trail and every public square she touched. Now therefore be it resolved that the Birmingham City Council, with Mayor Randall Woodfin concurring, does hereby express its appreciation and abiding love for Jane Reed Ross, whose lifetime of work has made Birmingham not only more beautiful, but more whole. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the city of Birmingham and presented to Ms. Jane Reed Ross as a token of our city's affection, admiration, and enduring gratitude. Adopted this twenty-first day of October two thousand and twenty-five at the recommendation of Counselors Valerie Abbott, Carol E. Clark, and Council President Daryl O'Quinn. Thank you. So I'd like to, motion for unanimous consent for the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known, must say aye. All opposed, say nay.
And move the resolution?
All in favor, let it be known, must say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Okay, thank you, Council. And we're going to ask a couple of speakers in turn to come up and make some remarks. First, I'd like to welcome Russia Smith from Freshwater Land Trust, then Teresa Shufflebarger from UAB's Live Health Smart Alabama, and then Walladine Streeter of the BBs. And I'll tell you all about that later.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Mayor Woodfin and fellow counselor members. Again, my name is Russia Smith. I'm the Executive Director of Freshwater Land Trust. And thank you for this opportunity to honor one of our most impactful citizens and also a friend, Jane Reed Ross. Part of the mission of our organization is to connect the Red Rock Trail System throughout Jefferson County. That simply would not be possible without Jane Reed Ross. She, first of all, has been a big dreamer from the very beginning of the inception of the Red Rock Trail System. She worked with a group of, a small group of individuals who conceptualized the idea of a countywide trail system that would connect all of our communities. And a critically important part of that idea was that it would ultimately allow every citizen of our county to have a trail or a green space within a mile of their home. This was just a little over fifteen years ago, but also when trails weren't as cool as they are now and when people didn't truly appreciate the impact that they could have on an area. So again, she dreamed big and today we have a hundred and sixty miles of the Red Rock Trail System on the ground and growing. And so not only did Jane dream big, she also built some really big projects that are part of the Red Rock Trail System. So think about the Shades Creek Trail or what's known as the Lakeshore Trail in Homewood, the Jones Valley Trail Extension, now known as the Hugh Call Trail, and the Sunrise Rotary Plaza. And then also the Rotary Trail, which really ignited a spark that helped with the redevelopment of downtown Birmingham. And then finally, I'll say that Jane has been one of the biggest cheerleaders for the Red Rock Trail System. Her patience, persistence, and persuasiveness have really helped make the trail system what it is today. And so I can't overstate that Jane has truly changed the landscape of our community. And we're incredibly grateful and know she'll continue to see the completion of the Red Rock Trail System come to fruition. Thank you, and thank you, Jane.
Good morning. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak and to the mayor for the opportunity to speak. I'm Teresa Shufflebarger. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer of Live Health Smart Alabama with UAB. And I wanted, you are an inspiration. Each of us are inspired in Birmingham each day by Jane, whether we know it or not. And you've heard enumerated the many ways in which she inspires us in Birmingham. With Live Health Smart Alabama, our goal is to make being healthy simple. We partner with many of you in this room today as we work to achieve that. Jane quietly behind the scenes makes sure that as we are making good health simple in Birmingham, that there are beautiful and interactive green spaces that help to accomplish that goal. Live Health Smart Alabama will only succeed with champions like Jane who inspire us every day to be a healthier community. Thank you.
Good morning. Mayor Woodfin, President O'Quinn, and all the city councils. I'm Walladine Streeter, President of the Great Bush Hills Neighborhood. And I represent on the board of the Bush Hills Connection in Cooperation. Today, I'm before you to say to Jane and to the council and the city of Birmingham how much Bush Hills Neighborhood appreciates you making our home a beautiful place to live on Bush Hills. This is the master plan that Jane presented to us. Based on our dreams of what we wanted our neighborhood to look like and based on the city of Birmingham help and the Birmingham City School to make it possible. We made Woodrow Wilson School into our dream. A happy place where all neighbors can come, can have fresh vegetables, can relax and have our own meeting location. We appreciate you, Jane. And we look forward to continue to work with you. And we know you're doing Phase Three now. They will come in November and build us a arbor in our garden. And thank you so much.
Would any other counselors like to make remarks? Do you have something you'd like to say?
Say it fast. It is absolutely the truth. You can see Jane Reed Ross's fingerprints all over the city of Birmingham in all the beautiful plants and artistically designed spaces. And I am sorry she's leaving for Denver, but I understand wanting to be close to family. So we'll miss you, but you'll come back.
So I just want to note in closing that since two thousand and eighteen, as a member of a grassroots coalition called Jefferson County Memorial Project, along with Maisha Hutchinson, who's behind me, and many others, I've had the pleasure of working closely with Jane on the design of a central healing space, a memorial planned for Lynn Park for thirty-three documented lynching victims of, of, well, victims of racial terror lynchings in Jefferson County. And we didn't get to build it because of certain factors in the national political scene. But I hope to see it built someday under this leadership, so no pressure. And Jane tried to leave us once more to move to her husband's country. And so I think it's taught her something about trying to leave Birmingham because they returned, due to some unforeseen circumstances, they came back shortly after. And this time, she's only sort of moving. She's moving her household and staying connected to Birmingham through various projects and special interests. So the public realm as city officials is our responsibility. And, you know, I get to leave that responsibility to you all. And, you know, just take this opportunity to say, as I close out my time here, that, you know, thank you. And, and cities like Birmingham, and she's helped so many cities, towns, municipalities, land trusts, and organizations. And we just want to say thank you on behalf of the city.
I'll just be real quick. I know it's, it's been long. But Mayor Woodfin, distinguished counsel, Counselor Clark, and how wonderful to be honored on the same day as Counselor Abbott. Thank you so much. I'm so moved and I am moving to Denver to be near my family. But thanks to technical, technical stuff, I can still work remotely for Birmingham. I'm still connected. I still have a bunch of projects, just like you, that haven't been finished yet. So I'm going to stay connected to Birmingham. I'm committed. And so, and I'll, I'll return often. So thank you so much for this honor. I just can't tell you how moved I am.
All right. One more. So we also have with us this morning Martha Bozeman, President and CEO of Pearl Bridge Strategies. She's going to come and talk to us this morning about the NASCAR Magic City Classic Car Show. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hit the button on the mic. There you go.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Woodfinn, Council President O'Quinn, Council Pro Tim, Ms. Alexander, and also to all the members of the City Council, City of Birmingham, and the general public. My name is Martha Bozeman. I do serve as President and CEO of Pearl Bridge Strategies, which is an external relations consulting firm. I, along with Senior Project Manager Virginice Howard, and also Mrs. Tifari's Forrest from MAX, come before you to invite you to a special event on Friday from eleven o'clock a.m. to seven o'clock p.m. I, as Pearl Bridge Strategies, do represent NASCAR Corporation and Talladega Superspeedway. I've been doing so for the last seven years, and I'm so excited that their involvement and their engagement within this Alabama and Birmingham market is really beginning to grow. And so we want to keep that growth going by bringing exciting opportunities to engage with the community in public and for them to learn more about the sport, both on the track and off the track. There's a lot of physics and engineering that goes into this particular industry when we're talking to college students and high school students as well. So there'll be a lot to learn on Friday, as well to enjoy in the form of entertainment and family involvement. And I'm gonna ask Virginice Howard to come before you to just kind of give you a brief rundown of the activities of the day, and hopefully you all can come out and join us.
Good morning. My name is Virginice, and I would like to inform you all of all the wonderful activities that we have going on this Friday at CityWalk for our Second Annual Cars and Coffee Car Show. So we're gonna have a car show competition, of course, and we have featured car showcase featuring our very own Mayor Woodfinn and his car, Ella Mae. We're also gonna have Big Crit, which is our artists and currency. They're gonna feature their cars. And these cars are gonna be brought down by a detail company out of Huntsville by the name of Spokes and Vogues. They work with a lot of locals, as well as a lot of celebrities. So they will have that car showcase, and I hope you all come, take a picture, and come see the cars. We're also gonna have Food Truck, which you know is brought to you by the City of Birmingham. We have the wonderful Ms. Shonda that's been working on that. So Food Truck Friday has been transitioned from City Hall over to CityWalk. We also have Music, which will be by DJ B. Brian, so he will be there all day with a nice little music collection for everyone. We have a car wipe-down service, of course, that's probably for the car entries. They will have that, that option to have their cars detailed at the spot, and that is gonna be sponsored by Spokes and Vogues. So we have Grid Nation X, which is our sponsor for our live performances, which is gonna be Sherri Brown and Logan the Entertainer. So those performances is gonna start at three o'clock, and if you all come join us, please bring your lingerie and just get ready for a good time. We're gonna have a Kid Zone that's sponsored by the Birmingham Museum of Arts. It's gonna be free, so we have an area for kids as well, where they can come in and enjoy a kid-friendly activity. And NASCAR is gonna bring down two simulators, so everybody will have access to that, and they'll be able to have that hands-on, you know, that hands-on to the simulation activity. We're gonna have two of those. It's gonna be there all day as well. So I think that's all that we have. You have any questions? I hope to see you guys, and this is gonna be from eleven o'clock a.m. until seven o'clock p.m. So I hope to see you. And I have MAX Transit here. They also have a little information to give to you guys for transportation services that we're going to provide, so.
Good morning. Yes, so we are excited to be a part of this awesome event. We will have a shuttle that will take Birmingham City employees to the event. The shuttle will be outside, the MAX On Demand vehicle will be outside of Short Twenty First Street over on this side, I believe. And the shuttle will run every fifteen minutes to take you to and from the event. The shuttle time will be from eleven o'clock a.m. until three o'clock p.m. And we're excited to find out, we get to have a spot of our MAX, I will unveil our new MAX On Demand vehicle at the event. It won't be as cool as the mayor's vehicle, I'm sure, but we're gonna be so excited to be there and unveil our new vehicle. So please come out, and we look forward to this awesome event and being a part. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did forget. NASCAR is gonna have a vehicle as well as Talladega Speedway. So we will have those vehicles there, and you will be all allowed to take pictures by the vehicle. So that's another plus.
Thank you. And that's pretty much it. I do want to say thank you again to all of our partners and our supporters, especially to the City of Birmingham. Ms. Shonda Temple has done an excellent job helping to facilitate Food Court Friday that's now gonna be located at CityWalk. We also want to thank Talladega Superspeedway, as well as Spokes and Vogues, and they just received a commendation in Huntsville, Alabama, from the City of Huntsville and the Mayor of Huntsville for the impact they're making with their business. We want to thank CityWalk, of course, the venue, as well as Grid Nation X and MAX. This has been quite a collaborative effort, and also with Black Restaurant Week as well, who's a premier presenter of this. This event has been going in the L.A. market, in the Chicago market, in the Daytona market, and we're very excited that they have brought it to Birmingham. We do work with the Vice President of NASCAR, Brandon Thompson. He would hope to have been on the line today, but got called into a meeting. He is the Vice President of Growth Engagement and Inclusion. And we also work with Brian Crichton, who is the President and CEO of Talladega Superspeedway. Wanted to say thank you to both of them. And we also have some great volunteers we want to say thank you to. One would be, of course, Dr. Cynthia Anthony and Mr. McCarthy there at Lawson State University. They're bringing out ten students from their automotive course there at Lawson, who will be helping us as volunteers. And we have many people who've taken off work to help us volunteer. Want to thank you, Mr. Watson, as well as car club members, who are not gonna enter but want to help come out and volunteer. They're so excited. And I also want to say thank you to two nosy volunteers that crashed the meeting today, my sisters, Virginia Bozeman and Patricia Henderson. We want to thank them for their volunteer effort and their support as well. So please come out, enjoy. It's gonna be a fun day, and we thank you so much for this opportunity. Again, thank you to Councilor Tate for helping facilitate this opportunity, especially since CityWalk resides in her district, and thank you both as well. Congratulations, Councilor Abbott.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations. Ms. Clark, do we have any announcements relative to boards and agencies?
I understand.
Okay, I'll read our statement on the conducted business. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, please read through the items on our consent agenda.
Consent agenda starts with the items one, two, three, and four on page two. Page three, we have items five, six, and eight on consent. Page four, items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are on consent. Page five, items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are on consent. Page six, items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are on consent. Page seven, items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are on consent. Page eight, items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are on consent. Page nine, we have items twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one on consent. And we skip over to page eleven, we have items thirty-six and thirty-seven on consent. Page twelve, items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty are on consent. Page thirteen, items forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three are on consent. Page fourteen, items forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six are on consent. Page fifteen, items forty-seven and forty-eight are on consent. Page sixteen, items fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five are on consent. Page seventeen, items fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine are on consent. On page eighteen, we conclude with items sixty and sixty-one.
Okay. Thank you. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Do any members of the public wish to any, to remove any of the consent agenda items that are marked for public hearing? Seeing none, we are ready for a motion. Councilor Abbott?
You know, I couldn't, I couldn't resist this. On page, item forty-three on page thirteen, the phrase "body as a whole" is repeated twice, and we ought to strike one item.
Right. Got it.
And I had a question. I did have a question about item forty-six. Why are we just putting initials on that item? Is there an easy explanation for that?
That was a settlement involving a city employee.
But everybody else has a name, and we just have initials in that one. Was that a...
That's specifically just because it was involving a city employee, as compared to another plaintiff or party suing the city.
Okay. Okay. That answers that question. Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
I just had a quick question about the Chief Health Officer of the city. Who is that? One of the items is recommended by the Chief Health Officer. I don't remember what it is. Item seven?
Episode seven.
I don't know, I marked it, but I don't...
Jefferson County Health Department.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Got it.
Mr. President, there was one other thing.
Councilor Abbott?
On the attachments, sixty-two A, they're saying that this sixty-two is five points south in the attachments, and it's not the five-point-south neighborhood. So I just, we just need to correct the neighborhood name. It's probably Druid Hills or Norwood. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the setting of the public hearing, but the documents that are attached have the wrong neighbor, neighborhood name.
Okay. Noted. All right. Council Woods?
In honor of my colleague on the same item, it also has the incorrect council district.
Item sixty-two. Yeah. So that, that one's not included on our consent agenda, so we'll, we'll make that correction when it comes up. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Some of it.
All right. Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Ready. Councilor Alexander Williams, voting should open about now.
All right. Yep.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Is it a password?
What's our password? Your district, four times. I mean, it's not like it's a secret, so be honest. Councilor Alexander?
Yes.
Council Woods?
Aye.
All right, I think that's everybody. It's unanimous.
Do we, is the vote gonna come up?
It's not. I don't know if they're showing it in the back. See, I'll check in a second.
I'm gonna assume that was unanimous.
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's by, so.
The consent agenda is approved. All right. Item number seven, please.
Item seven, a resolution relative to application of IQAP, doing business as easy, pool, and pay for a junk dealer's license to be used at eighteen forty-nine Ruffner Road, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one zero. And hearing of all parties, motion, please.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that, Council Williams?
My understanding is that there was an issue with this item from the administration. Is that correct, Mr. McDaniel?
We have Katrina Thomas that can speak to the zoning. I think that was one of the issues.
Was that the issue? Okay.
My name is Roger Calo, and I serve as the subdivision planner for the City of Birmingham. And for that item, the condition is that they need to resurvey those two acreage parcels for compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Well, then, my question is, why was this presented to Public Safety and was given a thumbs up if the administration's changing their mind?
So just for clarification, the administration has requested that the applicant provide additional information?
That they go through the subdivision process, which is basically a two-week process to resurvey the property.
So would, this was recommended...
We heard it at Public Safety, and we were told that it was good.
Okay. So my, I guess my question is, does this item need to be withdrawn?
Or delayed.
Delayed. All right. So motion for a two-week delay.
Second.
Amendment motion for a three-week delay.
Second.
Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Yeah.
I'm a no.
You a no?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
We have...
Okay. That item is approved, or the delay is approved, so this will come back up in three weeks. Next item, please.
All right. Let's see, we're going to thirty-two, I think.
Yes. Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. An ordinance to revise and reactivate the city's tree commission and to further provide for and regulate the care, maintenance, removal, and replacement of public trees and public rights away and other publicly owned property to further define offenses related to tree damage and removal without permission, and to address tree hazards on private property that are a danger to the public, travel, safety, and health by amending the General Code of the City of Birmingham Title II, General Government, Chapter Five, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article U, Urban Forestry and Tree Commission, adding Article C to Title Six, Health and Environmental Control, Chapter Five, Trees and Shrubs, and by repealing certain duplicate provisions of the General Code of the City. This is item of permanent operation. I need you see to pass it today.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
I move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
Okay. Councilor Abbott, would you like to do the honor of explaining this to us?
I would. I would. There's some humor here. When I first came into office, I tried to get the tree commission ordinance changed, and here we are, almost twenty-four years later. And Julie Bernard is either the fifth or the sixth attorney to work on this project. You'd think that this was really hard, and I guess it is really hard when you only have... You'd think that this was really hard, and I guess it is really hard when you only have a few weeks to work on it. But the funny thing is that every attorney who touched it changed the heck out of it. And so it was unrecognizable. And now we finally have a good, solid tree ordinance. And I have to thank Julie, 'cause she seems to get every project that comes along, and she has worked like a Trojan to get this ready for today so that we could pass it before I leave after twenty-four years. So I think it's funny. I don't know if anybody else does, but, you know, there, you just have to see the humor in it.
Right. You wanna give us a summary of what this accomplishes?
Yeah, what this does is our previous tree, we have a tree ordinance, but basically it's established the tree commission. But the tree commission didn't really have any power except to meet. And if someone cut a tree on the city right-of-way, we had to charge them with destruction of public property or something like that. And so we also didn't have anything to, to really recommend what to plant and what not to plant in a process. Right now, people just go out and do as they please. Excuse me. And we don't want people just doing as they please on the city right-of-way. And so this adds a lot of information on how to add a tree or a shrub, how to get rid of one if it's dead, and all the things in between, just how to deal with trees on the city right-of-way and on public property. And, and, and Mrs. Bernard has spent a lot of time, and lots of other people have been involved with this, the, the urban forester and the landscape people, everybody's been involved to make sure that this time we have an ordinance with teeth, and it also has a section in there where we can enter into agreements with property owners if the nar, the right-of-way is too narrow, so it's only two feet wide, and you can't really plant a tree on a two-foot-wide piece of grass. We can enter into an agreement with the adjacent property owner to plant a tree on their property. And then we'll have street trees, but they won't be pushing up the sidewalks, hopefully. And it also gives us the right, if there's a hazardous tree on private property, and it's hanging over the street or a school or a park and endangers someone's life, there's a process for the city taking care of it if the owner refuses. Kinda like all these vacant lots that we mow all the time, and the houses that are falling down. So it's just another way to help keep our residents safe.
Right.
And if, I don't know whether Julie Bernard, do you want to come up and say anything, or is this... If there are any legalities we need to know, I'm not the one to tell everybody.
Good morning, Julie Bernard. I serve in the office of City Attorney. And Counselor Abbott's done a very good summary and overview. I did want to say, yes, we've had, um, the urban forester and members of DPW work with us on it, um, you know. Kudos to our landscape architects up in urban planning. Lauren Havard and Abraham Dredson have done a lot to help with the draft. We've also had BDOT involved. We've had the city attorney, uh, city engineer involved. And, um, I involved our chief prosecutor to help me work on some of the, uh, you know, to kinda check with him about enforcement provisions, so, um, the, and he helped, you know, with some of our abatement processes in there. It's not a huge departure from the, the, um, policy that was in the city ordinance. We had a tree commission. We had some things that dealt with the baiting hazards and various things. Um, we are, with this ordinance, we are gonna leave, all of that was under Title II, Chapter Five, which deals with boards and commissions, et cetera, of the city. Always bothered me to have kinda regulatory stuff under that, 'cause it's really not the tree commission doing the regulatory part. It's city staff that's primarily carrying that out. So we're gonna, there's a chapter in Title VI entitled Trees and Shrubs. So all the regulatory stuff will be placed there, um, when it goes into the code, and the, um, tree commission will remain where it should be. Again, we, you know, set out an abatement process. There was an abatement process, but it was lacking in detail in the existing, so we fleshed that out. We fleshed out, um, some of the enforcement a little better. So, um, we also, the last section, um, creates a tree fund. Birmingham has had a relief fund, um, that we understand there's, still exists, but I haven't really found the official creation of that fund, so this officially creates a tree fund where if we have fines, restitution, um, or in having a permit to have a tree removed, um, to replace a healthy tree, if someone can't do that, then they can pay into this fund to allow the city to help provide for replacement trees, um, in a suitable place. So, um, that, and that is the other big, um, feature, is to have a permit. Someone says, hey, I've got a tree on the right-of-way, you know, city tree that's a problem. The urban forester will look at it. If it's dead or dying, you know, in proposed, you know, some problem, the city will take care of it. But if somebody just says, I want this tree gone, and it's a healthy tree, um, then the urban forester generally has rejected those, you know, applications. We don't wanna take down healthy trees. But if somebody's willing to provide a suitable replacement, then we would allow, you know, that to happen with either they're replacing the tree or paying into the fund, so.
Yes, Counsel Clark?
I have a question of, um, Attorney Bernard. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, is it allowable to codify, like, a nickname for an ordinance, like Abbott's Law? I mean, we, I've heard of it. I mean, Felder's, what, we were just talking about Felder's Law, so is that allowable?
It, yeah, I mean, there are, you know, there are a lot of times that you have a provision that says this, you know, either state statute or an ordinance shall be known as a short title, you know, so.
Without objection, I'd like to recommend that we, um, codify a nickname for this law.
Let the record reflect that henceforth, this ordinance shall forever be known as Abbott's Law.
And that will be, I will need to amend the draft to put in a short title for it and provide that to the court for final. Yes.
All right. Any additional discussion?
I did wanna say one other thing about this ordinance is that, just like all of our other ordinances, or just about all of them, resident input and resident watchful eyes are needed, because if people are out there cutting down trees on the city right-of-way and in the public parks, and no one catches them, then it's meaningless. So really, residents have to keep their eyes open and make sure that their neighbors and friends are not out cutting public trees just because, you know, they don't like them or whatever.
And I will say, you know, there will be some implementation period, you know, to get this going. We've had staff already kinda working on what needs to go into the application for the permit, but there will be some things that will be needed to be done to build it out in the system and be prepared. Of course, the tree commission, you know, the council can go ahead with beginning, you know, appointments, uh, for that. Um, we did reduce the size of the tree commission, and we created kind of a, the people who worked on the ordinance, the departments that worked on it, they can provide advisory. They're like a technical advisory, um, committee, and they can work with the tree commission. We didn't put a heavy burden on them meeting. We know how hard it is to get quorums of commissions. So they're only required to meet two times a year. They can meet more often if they desire. Um, you know, and that will be important, you know, with the public facing, um, you know, portions of the ordinance to have interest in the trees of the city and things like that, so. Just wanted to say that.
And back when we had a horticulture and urban forestry department, that department provided thirty trees to any neighborhood that was willing to plant them in, on city property. And I think that that would be a good goal for the city to have, because we cut down a lot of trees, and a lot of them fall down, but we don't plant all that many back. So the greening of Birmingham will be left to this council and interested residents. But the, the thirty trees that were given to a neighborhood that would get out and dig the holes and plant them and water them and keep them alive, and the city forester always had to approve the locations to make sure they weren't being planted in inappropriate spots, but that's just something to look forward to in the future. But thank you, Ms. Bernard.
All right.
Thank you. I did wanna thank Counselor Abbott for her long, long-suffering patience. But I have worked with Counselor Abbott on a number of things. I have been here for about twenty-two years, so we worked on the noise ordinance, um, and, um, I've, I've enjoyed it, and, um, I just, she's a good proofreader. I just wish sometimes she didn't point it out during the council meeting.
Well, I promise not to do that anymore.
Thank you. But thank you for your service, Counselor Abbott.
All right, Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Okay. Counselor, member Abbott, yeah, got you. Williams? Counselor member Woods? Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
All right. The vote should be up.
All right. Abbott's Law is the law of the land. Okay, item thirty-three, please.
Thirty-three, an ordinance approving a fiber optic franchise agreement with Loomis Fiber of Alabama LLC under which the city will grant to Loomis Fiber of Alabama the right to install and operate the city's right-of-way a fiber-based communication system for a term of twenty years, renewable for up to two successive terms of five years each. Loomis Fiber of Alabama will pay to the city a franchise fee equal to five percent of the gross revenue received by Loomis Fiber of Alabama and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. This is not in permanent operation. I need UC to pass today. Counselor member Abbott? Counselor member Clark? Counselor member Moore? Counselor member Smithman? Counselor member Williams? Counselor member Woods? Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander? Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion, please. Item is before you.
Any discussion regarding this item? All right, ready for the vote.
Voting should be open.
Item thirty-three is approved.
Counselor member Clark, I'm sorry. Yes? Is it working?
Thank you.
Vote should be up.
It's unanimous. Item thirty-three is approved. Item thirty-four, please.
All right, item thirty-four. An ordinance approving the fiber optic franchise agreement with Unity Fiber Gulf Co. LLC under which the city will grant to Unity Fiber Gulf Co. the right to install and operate the city's right-of-way a fiber-based communication system for a term of twenty years renewable, for up to two successive terms of five years, and Unity Fiber Op Gulf Co. will pay to the city a franchise fee equal to five percent of the gross revenue received by Unity Fiber Gulf Co. and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Uh, UC again for passage. Counselor member Abbott? Counselor member Clark? Counselor member Moore? Counselor member Smithman? Counselor member Williams? Counselor member Woods? Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander? Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion, please. Item is before you.
Any discussion on this item?
Counselors Abbott, Clark, Moore? That should be everyone.
All right, that item, so the vote is unanimous. The item is approved. Item thirty-five, please.
Item thirty-five, an ordinance pursuant to Section forty-one-nine-five-ninety-one-A of Code of Alabama, Act nineteen sixty-nine to nine, to nine sixteen, authorize the mayor of the chief, or the chief police to execute a user agreement between the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, ALIA, and the city of Birmingham for the Birmingham Police Department for a term of up to three years to ensure and define the responsibilities of ALIA and BPD, related to BPD's access to ALIA, State Bureau of Investigation, Criminal Justice, Information System Division. ALIA's CJS Information System. The city shall be authorized to pay an amount to which she'll not exceed seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, with two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to be paid in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to be paid in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, and two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to be ta, paid in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight. Funding source for this agreement shall be GL one thirty-seven, one, uh, zero one nine two zero dash underscore zero one nine two two point five two six dash zero zero one. Motion. I'm sorry, UC? Counselor member Abbott? Counselor member Clark? Counselor member Moore? Counselor member Smithman? Counselor member Williams? Counselor member Woods? Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander? Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion.
All right. Any discussion? Counsel Williams?
Couple things. One is just to make a note that this was heard by, uh, Public Safety and approved, uh, just for, um, informational purposes. The other is I want to repeat my, um, my comments that I made at Public Safety. Obviously, this is, um, uh, the, the increase in licenses are for, um, hopefully more APOST officers to be able to utilize them. But it is my expectation, and this is something that, um, you know, what, this is one of the things I've harped on, just like having, you know, APOST, um, code enforcement folks. We, all APOST officers need to have an MDT, not just access to a computer at the precinct where they're spending too much time at the precinct during shift change, but all APOST officers that are, that are on patrol, that are in, in a field capacity, whether, and, and from SRO to, to patrol, need to have an MDT. It is a huge disadvantage to our department when they do not. And I think that, um, that affects response time. It affects morale. It affects a lot of things. So I'm gonna continue to harp on the fact that everyone that is expected to do paperwork should have an MDT and have a license where they can run somebody just like any other APOST officer in any other agency in the state of Alabama.
Thank you, Counsel Williams. Any other discussion? We are ready for the vote.
President Pro Tim?
Yes.
That vote should be up.
All right. We're unanimous. That item is approved. Next item?
Forty-nine.
Is item forty-nine.
Item forty-nine, a resolution supporting one amendment to the Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority. Other city of Birmingham, stated term expires June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Move the item. All right, uh, so this is a item that came through the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. The committee's recommendation is for the appointment of Mashanda Taylor replacing Mahari McTier for a term expiring June fourteenth of two thousand twenty-nine. Any questions? We are ready for the vote.
Counselor Moore, thank you. Vote should be up.
All right. That is unanimous. Uh, so item forty-nine is approved. Item fifty, please.
Item fifty, a resolution supporting five amendments to the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority. Set terms expiring August the tenth, two thousand and twenty-nine.
All right. So this also came through the Infrastructure and Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. All right, so this also came through the Infrastructure and Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. We are, the committee has recommended the reappointment of Willie Davis for a term. All of these terms expire August tenth, two thousand and twenty-nine. So, Willie Davis and Michelle Enman are recommended for reappointment. We are also recommending the appointment of LaShonda Baldwin to replace Theodore Smith, Katie Dumas to replace Darrell Cunningham, and Patricia Todd to replace Ladon Jones. So, that being said, I would like to make a motion for us to delay action on this item. The, one of the things that's recently been instituted is a performance review of the executive director. And so, the sitting board is in the midst of that process and is scheduled to have that review for Charlotte Shaw on November sixth. So, I would like to make a motion for a three-week delay so that this appointment, these appointments fall on November eleventh. Okay.
Councilors Abbott, Clark, Pro Tim Alexander. That vote should be up. For three weeks. It was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So, that item will appear on the November eleventh council agenda. Item fifty-one, please.
Item fifty-one, a resolution appointing one member to the Birmingham Parking Authority of the City of Birmingham. Said term expires October the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Okay. Again, this item came through the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And Ms. Lakeisha Mack has been serving on the Parking Authority Board for one term. So, we're, the committee has recommended reappointment of Lakeisha Mack for the term expiring October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-nine. And we're ready for the vote.
Second. Okay. Voting should be up. Pro Tim Alexander.
I'm sorry, yes.
All right, got you. Vote should be up.
All right, that's unanimous, and so item fifty-one is approved. I believe the next item is item sixty-two.
Yes, sir. Item sixty-two, a resolution setting a public hearing December the second, two thousand and twenty-five to consider adoption of ordinance to Minnesota District Map of the City of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-five dash ten changed on this boundary from QMUD and QD four in order to allow for a new rental development that will have townhouses, townhomes, duplexes, and orchages by Northside Redevelopment LLC property owner and Brian Wolf. See our endeavors, the applicant for the properties generally located around the former Caraway Hospital campus, bounded by Caraway Boulevard to the east, Twenty-Fifth Street north to the west, Twentieth Avenue north to the north, and situated in section thirty-six, quarter, one-fourth, six, four, township sixteen, range two west Birmingham. And this is the first reading, so just need passes. Motion.
All right.
All right.
Okay. Any discussion?
With that correction about it not being the Five Point South neighborhood.
That's correct.
And the district.
Also correcting the council district.
What district should it be?
This is located in District Nine. Okay, we're ready for the vote.
Councilor Woods. Vote should be up.
All right.
One abstention.
So, that motion passes. That brings us to our announcements. Council Woods.
Good morning. A few quick announcements. The Sun Valley Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six-thirty PM at the East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center. The Huffman Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday. That's going to be October twenty-seventh at seven PM at Huffman Baptist Church. And also want to invite everyone out as we continue our be litter-free cleanup efforts. Partnering with the Blackberry River Keeper will be this Saturday, ooh, this Saturday, October twenty-fifth, nine AM to eleven AM. And just want to invite everyone out to participate and continue to help us kind of change the narrative in terms of keeping the community clean. And been appreciative of those residents that have kind of stepped up and taken personal responsibility in that space. So, excited to continue that process going forward. Also wanted to shout out a few folks I've had the opportunity to serve with. Councilor Clark, Moore, and Abbott. Have a great appreciation for all of y'all. I've learned a lot from all of y'all. I think Council Abbott getting here, like I said, had the opportunity to watch you serve before coming in and opportunity to serve with you. I thought you were, I think the word everybody keeps coming back to is consistency. I think just the ability to kind of see the way you showed up for your residents. You know, you made the hard votes when it was in line with what your residents wanted. And so, you know, I've kind of taken that to heart and prioritize what the neighborhoods, what the residents have wanted. So, just appreciate, you know, how you going about doing the job. And like I said, hopefully, you know, you'll send us some of those notes around misspelling so we can keep that going. Councilor Moore, kind of out east, man, just, I've enjoyed it, man. I thought we had a lot of similarities and just saw that your passion for doing the job, passion for people. And like I said, just have really enjoyed it, man. I think it's a unique opportunity just to get to serve and just seeing, you know, really how much you cared about people. I thought that was something that stood out. And Councilor Clark, I think you're unique because we would find ourselves talking a lot about, we would always find ourselves talking in your area of expertise. And so, I would always, I would always leave and have to go do some research. You know, we'd go deep into tax credit finance and things like that. So, just appreciate, you know, all of y'all's unique approach to doing this. I think, you know, we all learned there's no one way to do it, and so everybody has their own approach. So, I've enjoyed serving with y'all. Anything I can do to help, you know, let me know.
Thank you, Council Woods. Council Williams.
Thank you. Economic Development Tourism will be in the chambers when we conclude this council meeting. And Crestline Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday at the regular time and spot, six o'clock at Hope Church. To reiterate the eloquent speech from my colleague, serving with all three of you at the end of the dais has been great. I have, you know, all nine of us have such different personalities and we have different passions and we have different things that we care about. But it's been fun to see how those nine different things come together and how that we can serve the citizens of Birmingham with those nine different passions. And I've enjoyed getting to work with all three of you, gentlemen and ladies. And Valerie, I will continue, there's some projects I know you want me to make sure, continue, including our joint sidewalk project, which is almost finished. And Ms. Clark, we will have a ordinance at some point on surplus property and how we dispose of that. That, your passion on that has become my passion on that. And JT, man, look, we're going, we're going to keep going with the parks and rec and make sure that it's, that we're opening facilities for, for, for everyone across the city, not just in certain neighborhoods. So, thank you three for being colleagues and friends. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Pro Tim Alexander.
Yes, thank you very much. These are our announcements for District Seven. We have a couple of neighborhood meetings on Thursday, October twenty-third. We have the Industrial Center Neighborhood. They'll meet at six PM at the Mary Door Center. And then on Monday, October twenty-seventh, the Tarpley City Neighborhood Association meets at six PM. Falling in line with my other two councillors, I do want to take this time to really reflect and thank the members of the council that are leaving for this particular term. And I'll start with Council Clark. This has been our second time serving on, in an elected capacity, and I enjoyed serving with you on the school board and also enjoyed serving with you on the city council. We met first many, many years ago for your passion for jazz music. We actually did that. Jazz on the roof. And that, I don't even think that exists anymore. But I really appreciate your passion, and I've learned to love some of the cultural things that you talk about often. And I think Councilor Williams and I, I know you've got that passion about that surplus property, so we'll be sure to keep that going, okay? And, but again, thank you for your service, and I know that your residents have appreciated the work that you've done, and I've appreciated working with you. So, thank you very much. Councilor Moore, Councilor Woods talked about the similarities. And as you all know, just about every other council meeting, I mix them up every time.
I was surprised you got it right, honey, you know.
Listen, honey, I had to write it down, Moore. But seriously, though, I do want to say that it has been a joy and a pleasure serving with you. I've had the opportunity to see your family grow. I saw you finally get that boy, so I'm very excited for you for that. I really appreciate the passion that you brought about the youth. I wanted to be sure that our youth were involved in our public service. And it would be a goal of mine, I know we never realized it, but I know you wanted to see something as far as working with youth and getting them to be a part of the council, maybe a youth council or something like that. So, I appreciate that passion, and I also appreciate the work you did with the parking rec. And I know you had a passion to want to be sure our parks and our swimming pools were made available to everybody. And so, I would like to be sure that we stick with that, and we start early, Chief, in getting lifeguards and being sure that we've got the monies to have our parks open. And I want to dedicate that to you for the work that you've done for that. And last but not least, Councilor Abbott. I just want to thank you for, of course, your long service in, in the role that you played, not only in District Three, but for the City of Birmingham. It has been a pleasure and a joy. When I was first appointed to the council, believe you were the president at that time, and we went through a very contentious amount of time. I had to sit and wait and sit and wait to have the opportunity to serve. And I thank you for the leadership for that as the president. I also just want to thank you for, again, when you talk about wordsmithing and being sure that we've got these, the things that we print and that we put into law, it is important that they are written correctly because people come back and ask for those documents. And so, I appreciate the passion you've had for that, just the passion you've had for your residents and all. I was given the opportunity to be appointed to the Budget and Finance Committee, and I've worked under your leadership as the chair as well as Councilor Smithman. And it was always, people may not realize it, but often the weekend before Budget and Finance, the three members of that committee, we have read through the documents that we're given, and we have an opportunity to determine which of those items will be consented. And so, that's typically the work that we're doing over that weekend. It was always, I always wanted, I loved it. It was almost like getting a math exam, and when you find out what answers are correct, it was always an extreme joy of mine when you and I agreed on the same consent items. And I always felt like, I've done it. I've done it this time. I got it right. Because I know everything that you put into, wanted to be sure those items were correct and that we had the right speakers and brought people. So, I thank you for that. And I'll just stop with, I do, I hope everyone heard what you said at our last budget meeting when you were saying goodbye to us. And thing that I'll take with me, don't be afraid to ask questions. A question is just a question. You're seeking information. It's not a challenge, but it's a question. And I hope that we all and anyone who sits in these seats will carry that with us. So, thank you. I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tim Alexander. Councilor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Five Point South Neighborhood will meet today at six PM in the South Hall of Highland United Methodist Church. Railroad Park will continue its Get Healthy on the Railroad series sponsored by Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Alabama. All classes are free and open to the public. Next week will be the last series of classes, but they have senior fit, hip-hop cardio, zumba, yoga, and line dancing as well. Just in the sentiments of everyone else, I will say, you know, we are the best half of the dais. You know, we're, we are the best. We're the most fun. But no, seriously. You know, I wanted to start with Carol Clark. I think we really started when I appointed you to the land bank. And so, you really were a valuable asset. Actually, I'm telling you, I got a little trouble because everybody was like, how you appoint her while interviewing her? But I heard such great things about you that I knew you were going to carry the mantle for that. I really admire how knowledgeable you are in the way you try to also educate us. I never felt belittled by you when you tried to educate us about housing. And so, I hope you continue to nag us about making sure we have better affordable housing for the city. Thank you for your leadership, especially coming from a younger, I guess you want to say alpha woman to another experienced alpha woman. You have taught me that you can be a leader and a female with grace and also that, you know, your knowledge and your presence says a lot about it. And so, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you talking about the blues and the arts. And so, there will be a void on the council when you leave. And then JT, JT, I, I really admire how you advocate for the youth. I really seriously do. I, I don't know if we ever really gave your vision for the youth council, but I do admire for that, admire you for that. And I know that your president is going to leave a void because at the animal control public hearing, there was a constituent, I don't know if they told you, that was like, I'm really going to miss Councilor Moore because she said something about there was a deceased dog in her, in her yard, and she couldn't get anybody to pick it up. And so, she said, Councilor Moore just went and picked it up himself, and he was just like, I'm going to do it. And I think that really says the testament to, about you. I appreciate you for your silliness because you did break up a lot of the seriousness with us. And you did have a lot of great energy. I know there were times where we danced the eye-to-eye, and I do, even though I don't regret what I said, but I do want to publicly apologize. There was an incident where you and I danced the eye-to-eye, and I do apologize for that. I do mean that sincerely. You know, even though it happened, you know, it, it could have been handled a little better from the both of us, but I do apologize. And so, I hope that you continue your neighborhood work. And I'm sure you won't, we'll see a lot of you in District Four. And then Valerie, oh, Valerie, I'm going to miss you so much. I think I've known you longer than Randall, actually, because I was eight years old when you and my mom were appointed. So, you've always been there and like, ma'am Pro Tim, you were my president coming in. And I remember, you know, getting a phone call from you when I got appointed, and the way you just took care of us. I really appreciate it. You have been my seatmate. It was you and Councilor Hoyt. And, you know, you're just such a pleasure, and I consider you like a mentor. And like, ma'am Pro Tim, I appreciate you for taking me under your wing for Budget and Finance because you were the one who was like, I trust my baby with you. And you encouraged me to be chair of it, and I'm really going to miss the three of us being on the committee. I mean that sincerely. We had such great chemistry and learned so much from both of you all. And so, I actually wore red in honor of you. I did do that on purpose. I thought about you today. But I hope you always call us, even if it's ten, eleven o'clock at night. I hope you fussed at us for not missing any grammatical errors. And I appreciate you the way, and Josh spoke about it, but you always showed up at everybody's event. It didn't matter what district it was, you always were so supportive. And lastly, I appreciate the way you take care of the district because I grew up playing at Avondale Park doing tee-ball and softball, and that was my favorite part growing up because it was always the cleanest. It was always the nicest, and also playing at Highland Golf Course. So, I don't think this is goodbye. This is really just farewell. See you later. And hopefully you will come to our swearing-in next Tuesday. You may not want to come back up here, but I would like to see you up here. So, thank you three for all that you have done, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Smithman. Councilor Abbott.
Well, on last Thursday, October sixteenth, at nine AM, there was- Well, on, on last Thursday, October sixteenth, at nine A M., there was a ribbon cutting ceremony for the new all-inclusive playground at Bessius Dell Park. And this has been a long time coming, you know, like most projects that council members have, everything's a long time coming, but this was special because it's the first all-inclusive playground where both able and disabled children can play on the equipment and have a good time together. Nobody is sitting over on a bench watching everybody else have fun. And, uh, and it was, it was really, really a very nice thing and I wanted to thank the Park and Recreation Board and, uh, Shanae for getting it done, you know, because it has been such a long wait. Um, the next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-second at three thirty P M. in the council chambers, which is tomorrow. Um, Neighborhood Association meeting, Counselor Smithman already pointed out that at six o'clock, Five Point South is meeting and at six thirty next Monday, Josh will be at the Crestwood South Neighborhood Meeting in, uh, at the Levite Jewish Community Center and, uh, and he'll be enjoying his, dipping his toe into the water of neighborhood meetings. Um, and certainly I want everybody to still call three one one and put the app on their phone, but I wanna say to my colleagues how much I have enjoyed all of you, every single person on here. And I'm still mad at Carol because, you know, I, I didn't know when to leave and she's leaving too soon. So, you know, there's a problem there. And I told JT, I said, you know, I lost two elections before I was elected to council, you know, and it was like, the third time is either the charm or I'm gonna take a hint. And fortunately I won and then I just stayed forever. So, um, so, but it's been great to meet all the different people, it's just that this council is the best and I am going to come back to see you. I am, I'm gonna be sitting right back there near Paul, cause Paul comes to all our meetings and listens in to what we do and I'm gonna be in there and every once in a while, I might even be on the speakers list.
There you go.
But I just wanna say that I've really enjoyed it and I'm gonna miss y'all. It's gonna be really quiet.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, didn't have any announcements, but did wanna just, you know, say thank you to all my colleagues on the council for, um, these four years. Man, I've really enjoyed myself being able to have the honor and pleasure, uh, of working with each and every one of you as well as the mayor and his staff. Um, I know, um, Madam Protem talked about how, you know, asking questions is not a bad thing. Um, that's one thing that I can always count on from, uh, Counselor Clark, is, uh, she, she's gonna ask all the tough, hard questions and if it's too tough, she gonna put a joke at the end and, you know, just kinda getting a little laughing off to make everybody feel better about it. Um, and I'mma miss that. Uh, I know, uh, Valerie, we, I, I just love the fact that, you know, she has such historical context, um, really sitting between these two, like you learn a lot, um, just from the questions that are asked as well as, you know, some of the, the conversations that go back and forth. I'm just, you know, a fly on the wall, um, and so I greatly appreciate y'all. Uh, Crystal, you know, um, I can always count on her to add some well-rounded perspective, uh, to some different things that come before. She, she always will, you know, share her insight and, you know, the things that she's learned or she's heard about, uh, just to ensure that, you know, everybody has an understanding of what we're doing and, um, how different things can, you know, impact us. And I, I greatly appreciate, you know, uh, your words earlier, um, and, you know, I, I echo them myself, you know? Um, I know that there have been some challenges, but, you know, that just comes along with the territory. Um, but I'm looking forward to some of the great things that you are going to continue to do, um, and continue to, to work with you as well. Um, uh, President O'Quinn, you know, uh, always appreciated his insightfulness, um, and, you know, just the things that he knows, uh, you know, it might take him a minute to get it out, but, you know what I'm saying? But he gonna get it out and, and it's gonna be good, you gonna learn from it. Like, and I, I've always appreciated that, um, just a genuine dude, um, real laid-back, um, and, you know, I've, again, just appreciated being able to work with you. Um, Counsel Protem, you know, it's, it's always, I love Wardine, man, like, Wardine is going to, you know, make sure that you have an awesome time, um, but she always has compassion, you know, for each and every person on the council and, you know, um, just the people that we serve, man. Like, she truly does, uh, she cares, um, and I, I'm, I'mma miss, you know, uh, just being able to, to kick it with you, miss, miss being able to kick it with you. Um, Hunter, I, I love Hunter, man, like, uh, Hunter has like this fiery personality. He don't mind raising a stink about the things that matter to him and his district, um, which is important because you need that, you need that. And, um, we haven't had a chance to work on as many projects, uh, together, but I have, you know, enjoyed just being able to, to watch you, um, as you advocate for your people, um, and as you, you know, continue to just be a broken record sometimes and just say the same thing over and over and over and over again until it get done. So, um, I could appreciate that. Um, Tate is not here, uh, but that's because she's standing on business somewhere, which is something that I've always loved about her. Um, so, yeah, uh, in her absence, uh, much love to you, Counselor Tate and Counselor Woods, man, like, I truly, truly appreciate you, sir. Um, it's, you know, uh, it's a beautiful thing when you can work with somebody that you not only respect, um, but somebody that, you know, you consider to be a brother, like, and I've seen that, um, yeah, I've, I've, I've developed that, that, uh, that respect and that, you know, admiration for you, uh, because you have been somebody that has been consistent as well. Um, you know, you can always tell, you know, a person, um, who is, uh, really a champion for you, uh, especially when they don't have anything to gain from it, right? And you spoke up for me, uh, when you didn't have anything to, to gain, um, or anything to, to be able to say, you know, uh, yeah, like it, it was, it was a big moment for me, uh, because loyalty is, is something that is truly, um, rare, uh, but it's, it's, it's a true gem when you see it. And so, I appreciate you so much for that. Um, and yeah, like I said, you got a, you got a brother in me for that. Um, and I, you know, I could go down the list of all the people, um, I don't want to miss anybody, so I'm not, right? Uh, probably make me a Facebook post and just, you know, tag everybody. Um, but, you know, there is one person in particular that I do just gotta shout out cause, you know, in this space, you know, it's always important to have somebody that you look up to, that you, you know, you lean on, you use as measure sounding board, um, and just kinda bounce thoughts and ideas off of, um, and that can, you know, give you encouragement, uh, in the times that you need it. And, um, Jeffrey McDaniel's, man, like, boy, shout out. He sit over there quiet with them glasses on, man, but that is, that is, man, all the time, all the time. And, you know, I just appreciate you, sir, like, like for real. Like, when it comes to being or having a big brother, like, he is that, he is him. And, um, I've appreciated the conversations that we've been able to have, I've appreciated you being able to talk me off the ledge sometimes, um, and, you know, just allowing me to, you know, get some of those emotions out because, you know, in this space, in this arena, it's very common for you to have emotions and you have to know what to do with them, uh, and you have to still keep your head, um, and walk with your chest here, I mean, walk with your chest out. And so, um, man, I just, I just appreciate you, truly. I appreciate all the advice and the words of encouragement, man, it, it meant the world. Um, and so, yeah, I just wanna say to each and every one of you, I appreciate you, I love you, thank you for the work that y'all have done, um, and I continue to, I will continue to work with each and every one of you in my own little capacity. Uh, I'll just say this one last thing, uh, my daughter, you know, uh, when I lost, she was just like, I'm so glad you lost. I was like, dang, oh my God, not even in my own house. Um, but she was just like, nah, I'm just glad cause now, you know, we get a chance to like really kick it with you and we ain't gotta, you know, worry about you being on the phone all the time, uh, you can actually play with us. And so, you know, um, some things that may look like a loss, um, are not, right? Like, it's, it's, I don't know, perspective is a beautiful thing and so, um, again, I just appreciate, you know, my time here with y'all and I look forward to the great things that will come out of the city of Birmingham.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Clark.
Wow, I can't follow that, but, anyway, no neighborhood meetings in District Eight this week. Um, come, you can come out to the oldest ballpark, Rickwood Field, on Sunday for their annual Home Run Derby. That event starts at one P M. and features former M L B. and college stars taking the diamond, once again, I don't know who they are. But anyway, the tickets are on sale now and all proceeds benefit Rickwood Field. If you're looking for a bit of quiet this week, warning, this is for you. The Abrams Ingle Institute for the Visual Arts is proud to present Young Gifted in Black, the Lumpkin Bokusi Family Collection of Contemporary Art. You can avoid the madness of the Magic City Classic, go sit on a bench, look at art and just, you know, catch your breath. And then, uh, it's a free ex- exhibition that runs until December thirteenth and the Magic City Classic is here and it'll wear you out. There are so many things on our calendar, so I just can't even keep up with them all. But do have a safe and enjoyable time here in Birmingham. And just in my parting remarks to this council, it's been a really hot honor for me to serve and I've seen a lot of city councils and boy, it's been drama among these, uh, grown people, you know? So, when I ran for office, I said, I wanna win and I don't wanna serve with any crazy people. And I got both wishes and I really, uh, appreciate the civility, uh, the respect for everybody's lane, um, the mayor and the central staff, uh, of the city council, just the support, you know? The mayor and I didn't always agree, but he was always available and always accessible. And I wanna thank Wardine for bringing us in, bringing me in with the team of ten. And that harmony that so needed to be restored between the mayor and the council was so important. But anyway, I'm gonna miss you guys and I'm all choked up, I'm choked up cause of him, not cause of me. But anyway, just love you all and I'll be watching.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. In District Five, we have the Central City Neighborhood Association that will meet tonight at six P M. If you would like to attend that meeting, please reach out to my office directly at two five four, two six seven nine, uh, for additional information. Um, I wanna share with you a, a letter that I got from the Jefferson County Health Department, um, that's providing public notice for a, uh, comment on a, a, a permit. Um, so, uh, New Core Tubular Products is located at thirty-five, twenty-five Richard Arrington Junior Boulevard North. Um, the, the New Core has applied for a change of its minor source operating permit to a synthetic minor source operating permit. So, um, there is a public comment period opening on October fifteenth that will be open, remain open through November fourteenth. And a, electronic copy of the draft permit, the engineering review and the permit application is available on the Jefferson County Department of Health's website. That's W W W J C D H dot org. Um, so again, that public comment period will be open through November fourteenth. Transportation, the next Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will take place, uh, next Monday at two P M. uh, in the council chambers. Please contact Kimberly Phillips if you have items, uh, submit to the agenda. Um, tonight, there will be a, uh, Magic City Classic Old School Concert that's gonna be in the Boutwell Auditorium, doors open at five P M. Uh, the concert will feature performances by Rose Royce, Dougie Fresh and the Voices of Birmingham. Uh, this vent, event is free and open to the public. And then just finally, um, I wanna say thank you to my colleagues who are departing. Counselor Abbott, again, you're the prototype, uh, for, for all of us. Counselor Moore, uh, I, I know we're gonna sit each other around, but one of the things that, um, truly admire about you is that, uh, in the execution of your public duties, you often had one kid on your hip and one holding on to your leg. So, you are being a dad and a counselor at the same time. Much respect, uh, to you for that, uh, but I also, uh, appreciate your commitment to youth literacy. That was one of the things that put you on the pathway to coming to the council. Um, and, you know, I will never forget, uh, rapping with you and Counselor Woods, the, the C W A. Um, you don't know how many times I rehearsed, there's a bucket in my pocket, um, hours, hours. And I still messed it up, but anyway. Um, that was a lot of fun and, you know, will be a life, lifelong memory. And, um, Counselor Clark, uh, I was so excited when you announced your candidacy, um, and, you know, you've been a wealth of knowledge and a, you know, person who's, um, you know, helped me step up and, um, you know, I know that we'll continue to be in touch and, um, you know, you're a resource that I just can't let go. So, thank you so much for your service. All right, we have no public speakers today, so I'll thank our officers on duty, Officer Pinkert and Officer Square, um, thank you for being with us. And with that, we are ready for a motion.
Move for adjournment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.